Streets nine nine three, your choice of hip hop and R and B C, the plug is up in here. And I tell you once again, every time I bring somebody in the studio, you need to be paying attention to these people, right? I'm bringing people in the city and bringing them in here, putting them on the platform. So we can find out more about them, what are they doing here good in the hood? I got my man, Robert Taylor. Robert, thanks for joining us on the show today.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, all right. Uh, Robert is, uh, running, he's, uh, running for school board district one. But I'm gonna stop talking, just tell us a little bit about you. Tell us some history about you, man, and, uh, for the people that don't know who, who is Robert Taylor?
Yeah, so, um, I'm Robert Taylor, I'm from Washington DC originally.
Okay, go, go.
And, uh, there you go, you already know what it is.
Go, 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 go town.
And all that rare essence and backyard bad and all of that, right? And, uh, so I came to Nashville in nineteen ninety-five to Tim Fisk University. And I had scholarship here and, uh, and decided that this was gonna be my home. I came to Nashville on a visit and fell in love.
Okay.
And, uh, and so I got to school here, I also fell in love while I was in school. I met my wife.
At school?
And I did.
Okay, shout out to wife, shout out to wife for taking it.
Wife Adua.
Okay.
And, uh, and so we ended up getting married, uh, about two years after we graduated.
Okay.
And, uh, and decided as newlyweds, we wanted to move back to the big city and, uh, move back to the DC area.
Okay.
And so I moved back up to DC, uh, where my family is at and, uh, and started my career in education and public health.
Okay.
I worked at Bowie State University.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and I worked in the Office of Institutional Advancement where we, uh, wrote grants to be able to support different programs, uh, at the university. Bowie State is similar to Tennessee State University where they have a strong education department.
Okay.
So one of the first grants I worked on was called Preparing Tomorrow's Teachers for Technology. So when you see in the classroom, you have all these whiteboards and now in metro schools, they use the Promethean boards. We had those back in two thousand and were training teachers on how to use them and, uh, developing the curriculum for it.
Okay.
And, uh, so that was some of the work I was involved in early on in my career. Uh, we also wrote some grants related to public health. Um, during that time, this was twenty plus years ago, um, most larger cities were going smoke free. So back in the day, uh, believe it or not, you could smoke indoors, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, and so we were a part of, um, the team that was helping to write the legislation and develop policy to eliminate smoking indoors. So we successfully did that in Washington DC, Maryland, Virginia area.
That's amazing.
And, uh, and so I worked there, uh, for about six years doing that type of work. Policy work, um, working in the health department, but then also supporting, uh, teachers in the school system through my role at Bowie State.
Okay.
While I was there, uh, they paid for me to get my master's degree.
I know, that's right.
So that's it, I took advantage of the education.
As you should.
Exactly, and I got my master's degree in public administration.
Okay.
And, um, uh, during that time, my wife and I had three children.
Hmm.
So during that six-year timeframe, we had three kids.
Yeah.
And we started thinking, man, it's pretty expensive to live in DC.
You better know it is, the kids alone are expensive.
That's it, and my wife is White Creek alone.
Oh, gosh.
You know, she is.
The creek.
That's it.
The cobras.
That's it, that's her. And, uh, and so we were thinking about where do we wanna live and raise our kids? My, my youngest, I mean, my oldest daughter at the time was just starting pre-K.
Mm-hmm.
And so we wanted to figure out, are we gonna put her into, uh, to the schools in DC? Or are we gonna look at Nashville where sh- where my wife is from?
Mm-hmm.
And so we found, uh, an opportunity, uh, we, uh, applied for her to go to Hole Jackson.
Okay.
And we ended up just moving once we got into Hole Jackson, came back to Nashville.
Uh-huh.
I found a job at the health department doing tobacco control.
Okay.
Because they were still smoking indoors in Nashville. And so I came back, helped write the policy implementation for all the bars and restaurants downtown.
Mm-hmm.
And so during my work, we went smoke free.
And when, when did they make that smoke free?
That was in two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was a good while ago, and.
I'm just showing a picture of what I, what was I doing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Deejaying at all the smoky clubs back in the day.
Exactly, exactly, and so we went down there and we talked to the bars and restaurants, cuz I think at the time, they were concerned that they would lose business if you went smoke free, cuz all the people did like to smoke indoors.
Right.
We were able to show them that the majority of people through data don't want smoking indoors.
Right.
And that the business would increase. And so when we went smoke free, they were able to see that they, their business increased after they went smoke free. And you look at downtown, people enjoy going downtown cuz they know when you go in there, you're not gonna come out smelling like smoke and all of that type of stuff, and you can wear that same coat the next day to church.
Yeah.
Right?
Smokey, smoky.
That's it, and, uh, and so that was some of the work that I did early on in public health. Um, but once you go smoke free, you kinda work yourself out of a job.
Yeah.
And that's the goal of a public health practitioner, is you, you solve problems and you work yourself out of a job. And so I was looking for a new opportunity and we had just gotten a new grant at the health department. It was, uh, from the federal Healthy Start program, which reduces infant mortality. So infant mortality is defined as when a child passes away before their first birthday. And so we had an issue where we had too many babies that were dying before they reached the age of one for various reasons. Um, oftentimes there were birth defects, um, sudden infant death syndrome, a lot of different issues. And Healthy Start had been around at that time for about twenty years. It's a, it's a home visiting program where nurses go into the house and work with the mom and the baby. And the rates were dropping, but at a certain point, they had plateaued where they just weren't getting any lower. And our rates were still higher than third world countries. So we're like, what is going on? Why, why can't we get these rates any lower? They realized that the program was only serving moms and the babies and they weren't working with the dads. And so my role was to come in.
How'd the dad make an impact in it?
Well, think about it, it takes two people to make the baby, right?
Yeah.
So now you only providing support to a mom and a baby and you leaving the dad on the sideline. Whereas dad can be involved in so many ways, here's one simple way. Breastfeeding is one of the best ways to provide immunity support to a newborn baby.
Mm-hmm.
Well, dad can help with breastfeeding by one, making sure that the baby latches on properly, now I'm getting into all the details, right? But making sure the baby latches on properly, helping with diaper changes, mom is exhausted.
Oh, okay, okay, I can understand that, okay.
Baby, sometimes she's had a C-section, she's not moving around as well. And if dad is in the home or even available to mom to help support with all of those things.
He can help.
She gonna be more likely to breastfeed. So we did a study where we worked with dads who were supportive of breastfeeding and we worked with dads who weren't available to support with breastfeeding. Moms that didn't have a dad only breastfed at a thirty-eight percent rate. Where moms who had a dad that was supportive of breastfeeding, they breastfed at seventy-eight percent.
And they had a lot more time and stuff and assistance and stuff.
So it over-doubled the rate of breastfeeding when a dad was involved in supporting, which then increased the number of babies that were getting extra immunity support and, uh, and just being breastfed to have the best food possible for them. And so that was the work that we started doing. And, uh, and so I got involved in that, Healthy Start has about a hundred and ten programs throughout the country.
Okay.
So they fund health departments and nonprofits throughout the country. At the time that I started, there were only five that had male involvement specialists, and I was one of those five.
Mm-hmm.
And we developed that program to where now the federal government that funds the program requires that every program has a male involvement specialist like myself, uh, to work.
And all those hundred and some, okay.
That's it, and, uh, and so we created a, a larger program from that at the health department, a fatherhood program. And so a lot of people know me as the fatherhood guy.
Okay.
And, uh, and so we were able to secure a million and a half dollar grant from that, where we supported fathers, provided comprehensive services for them, and we served over a thousand guys with that.
That's amazing.
It was, it was, uh, it was probably the most amazing program of my life. Um, but now here we get into some of the, the politics around it. There were some folks that didn't like to see people that looked like me being successful with a program.
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
And supporting dads that looked like me.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, so some drama came up about that to where I ended up having to lead the health department and, uh, and start my own nonprofit to do the same work. And so I continue to do that work to this day. And, uh, the craziest part about it is now I have a contract with the health department.
With the same place you was working at, now you got a contract.
That's it, and I make more money from the contract than they were trying to pay me while I was working at the health department. And, uh, so it's just a blessing, man, God worked everything out to where I was able to do the same work that I enjoyed and loved doing.
Right.
And, uh, and be able to support, uh, the families that we do through the nonprofit. Um, and so that's what I do on, in, on my side hustle. My day-to-day job, I'm an instructor at Mary Medical College, so I teach public health, uh, in the Massachusetts Public Health Program.
Okay.
And, uh, and I work as the program manager there. And, uh, and I love that work, working with students is just one of the things I love the most. And so, um, that's how I got involved with education, I worked in the school system for a while.
Mm-hmm.
I was a family involvement specialist, um, I, I worked with dads in particular and, uh, tried to encourage fathers to get more engaged and involved in the schools. We did a fatherhood festival every year there.
Oh, man, you gotta let me know all that, man, I'm trying to be a part of all that.
We do it every year, the, uh, weekend before Father's Day, it happens to be CMA, so you might be a little busy that weekend, but.
Nah, yeah, we, we can get on the calendar, yeah, we can get on the calendar.
And, uh, but we work with fathers and, and support active fatherhood.
Right.
We want our kids to be active in their kids' lives.
I make sure I'm very active in mine, I have four kids and myself, but you know, if you don't, if the father is not there actively, you know, being present in the child's life, the child miss out on a lot of things.
Yeah.
Um, child's not coming out successful as the child needs to, cuz you need both parents.
Man, I had.
You need both parents.
I had a mentor when I first got started, he, uh, was the CEO at the National Fatherhood Initiative.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, they're the ones that do those, they used to do those fatherhood.gov commercials where you see the dad doing the cheerleading with his daughter and all that. They were responsible for those. And, uh, Roland Warren was the CEO at the time, and he would always used to say that every child is born with a hole in their heart the shape of their father. And so either the dad can fill that space
Mm-hmm.
or the child is gonna look for something else to fill that space. And so it's our role as men to step up and make sure we're filling that hole in our child's lives so that they don't have to go searching for something else. And I think that we got far too many kids that are searching for something else to fill that space, and oftentimes it's the wrong thing.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and so that's what I challenge men to do, is to step up, be good fathers, regardless of what your circumstance is, what your situation is with the mom.
Right.
Or whatever, we can work on that.
We all know she getting baby mamas crazy.
That's it, that's it. So I do a lot of work with guys that's dealing with child support and we do mediation for them and, and all that. I do the parentage plans and whatnot, but, uh, I always help guys remember that the focus is on our chi- our kids, our children, they come first.
Yeah.
So I don't care what you got going on with mom, make sure you stay involved in your kid's life and we can work out all the other details.
I know, that's right, man, I really appreciate you taking that initiative in that and, uh, being that advocate for that. Uh, so let's go ahead and get to talking about, man, you're running, uh, tell everybody, you know, what you, what, what, uh, district you're running for and what area does that cover?
Okay, yeah, so I'm running for a school board in district one.
Okay.
District one is probably one of the largest school board districts landmass-wise. So we cover all the way from Jolton, so the top of the northwest part of the county.
Okay.
We come all the way from Jolton, all the way down to the Cumberland River where it crosses by, um, Centennial Boulevard where John C. Toon Airport is.
Mm-hmm.
Across, um, Clarksville Highway where Trinity Lane is at.
Mm-hmm.
So coming down Trinity Lane and going all the way over to Main Street. So just across Main Street where East Community Center is, uh, that's the, where the other boundary to the district is. And then going all the way back up Ellington Parkway, uh, over to where Hunter's Lane High School is at.
Okay, so what high schools are in that, um, in that district?
So, let me.
Now we got, now we got White Creek.
Yeah, we got White Creek in there. Um, we got White Creek, East Nashville and Maplewood are all in the.
No Stratford?
Stratford is just outside of the district on the other side of the line, I know.
I'm, I'm a Spartan.
But, but, uh, students who attend Stratford live in district one. So the boundary, even though the boundary, the school isn't in the district, families that attend Stratford live in district one.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Right.
On that, on the, um, the western side of Stratford.
Okay.
Towards Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
So tell us, um, why, why are you running for, for school board district one? And why do you feel like, you know, you're the perfect person to take on that position?
Yeah, there's a couple of reasons why I'm running, one is because I worked in the school system. And when I worked as a family involvement specialist, I was able to go to every school in the White Creek Cluster. So that means the elementary schools and the middle schools that all fed into White Creek,
Mm-hmm.
I worked in those schools with the families and the children there.
Mm-hmm.
And I just saw so many areas where we could improve the outcomes for our students that we weren't taking advantage of. And a lot of them had to do with just policies and making sure that we were holding people accountable for, uh, doing the things that the policies say. Um, and I can give you an example.
I was gonna say, for example?
Every school is supposed to have a school improvement plan, right? They call it SIP. So you're supposed to have a SIP meeting at the beginning of the year and you're supposed to invite parents from the school to participate.
Mm-hmm.
Well, oftentimes they would say, we weren't able to find any parents that wanna participate. But then when I would reach out to the parents, they would say, we didn't even know about it, right? But there was no accountability to say, you can't do your SIP plan without a parent. That is what needed to happen.
Mm-hmm.
The policy should say, unless you have a parent, you can't put your school improvement plan together.
Are, are there any marketing, um, tactics or something?
All you have to do is send an email out to the parents and say, hey, we have this opportunity for you to be involved in the school improvement plan.
Their, their marketing tactic wasn't even there.
Wasn't happening all the time.
Okay.
And, you know, there's a lot of reasons why you would just go move forward without the parents being involved.
Of course, of course, yeah.
Decide what the motives were. But what I do know is that parent voice is so important.
Yeah.
And so powerful in a school to helping the school make the changes that they need. And, uh, and when you don't, uh, encourage parents to be involved and to have that voice, they fall by the wayside and you lose the effectiveness that comes along with them being involved and being engaged.
Mm-hmm.
And so my goal is to make sure that we have a policy in place that requires those parents to be engaged and to be involved on a regular, consistent basis. I also wanna see an opportunity for fathers to be involved in the schools
Okay.
on a regular basis and hold people accountable to making that happen. And so that's one of the reasons why I'm running, I hope to have a policy in place that requires, um, the school improvement plan to always include parents and that you cannot submit the plan unless you have parents. Um, I can give you another example, um, we have, uh, Community Achieves is a program in the schools where you bring, um, community partners together to support activities, uh, in the schools for parents and the children. Um, what I wanna make sure happens is that every school has something related to that, that's similar to Community Achieves, as well as, um, a plan that says, hey, if I get a donor that comes here and says, I can donate fifty thousand dollars today to this school, what are you gonna use that fifty thousand dollars for? Every school should have an answer for that, right?
Mm-hmm.
I took a, uh, a donor to a school one time, this happened right before Christmas break. And they had just finished their Angel Tree, um, event. And so when I told the donor, hey, you know, this school is interested in partnering with you and the donor was interested in partnering with the school.
Okay.
Now this guy, in his mind, he could put a hundred thousand dollars into that school tomorrow, right? The school told him they didn't know what they needed and to where I was embarrassed. Yes, and in my mind.
But if they would've filled out the SIP form, you would've had the answers already for the donor.
Exactly, and so we missed an opportunity because we weren't held accountable for doing the things that we already had in place. And so I wanna make sure there's a policy that holds us accountable for doing it. So that's one of the reasons for, uh, for me running for school board. Um, the other reason is kinda personal for me. Um, I believe that metro public schools can be the best option for every student in our district.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my son went to Cumberland Elementary, which is the school I'm zoned to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, unfortunately Cumberland, um, had to make a decision between keeping a music teacher and keeping a, uh, foreign language teacher. And, you know, I wanted my child to have access to both, right? Um, but the state requires you to at least keep the music teacher, I believe. And so, uh, they eliminated the foreign language. Well, I ended up choosing another school for my child because I wanted my child to have the best, right? I think all parents want their children to have the best.
Right.
And I think that we can make sure that metro schools are the best schools possible. And that's why I'm joining, I wanna lead that effort to make metro schools the best option available for all parents.
Okay.
Regardless of how you feel about, you know, public, private charter, all of that. Let's work on making metro the best schools, then you ain't gotta worry about all of that, right? And, uh, my wife says it best, she says that, um, you know, she said this to me when we were dating, right? She said, if you leave a void, don't be mad when somebody else comes and fills it, right? So basically, if I, if I don't do what I'm supposed to do to keep her, right?
Mm-hmm.
And another dude come along and he willing to do it.
You can't get mad.
Oh, don't get mad at him, you need to step your game up, right?
All the way.
That's it, and so let's make sure we're doing everything that we can to step our game up in metro schools so that parents see us as the best option.
Right.
I would love to send my kid to my zone school every day if I knew that it was the best option for my kid. But if I got another option that I think is better.
You're gonna send it over there?
I'mma, I'mma do what I think is best for my kid, and, uh, and I think that every parent should do that.
Mm-hmm.
And I wanna make sure that metro schools is seen as that best option for every parent. And so that's the reason why I'm running.
That's what's up, man, I really appreciate that. Um, what are some concerns that you're seeing with some of the parents, um, with the school, with the school board?
Yeah.
Um, because, and then, do they have a voice or somewhere that can go and express their concerns where people can actually really hear?
Yeah, I think, I think that the school board currently does a really good job of, uh, allowing parents to come in and voice their concerns. Um, every school board member, uh, has an email address that you can email them. Um, and you can email all of the school board members, not just your, your representative, and let them know what your concerns are. Um, the only change that happened, and I think this, uh, kinda helped to limit the length of the meetings, was that, uh, you can only discuss the topics that are on the agenda for that specific, uh, school board meeting.
Okay.
And so if you have a topic of concern, then you need to reach out to the school board representatives so that they put it on the agenda.
Okay.
So that you can come to the meeting and voice it, uh, at the school board meeting. Um, my goal is to make sure that there's just a clear, clean pathway for people to communicate with me so that I can raise that to the level of the entire school board. Um, we have a website, um, you can, uh, contact us on, it's called TaylorForSchools.com. It's T-A-Y-L-O-R-F-O-R, schools with an S at the end, dot com. And, um, and that website just gives more information about me and then will also have a, uh, link for people to click on to, uh, put their suggestions or concerns and things like that. Uh, so that we can follow up on them on a regular basis.
Okay, cool, 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 Taylor For Schools, now Schools with an S at the end.
At the end, yep.
TaylorForSchools.com, make sure you got, I'll post all that information so you guys can stay connected with my man, Robert here. Tell us about New Life Center, man.
Yeah, so the New Life Center is the nonprofit that I started when I left the health department.
Okay.
And, uh, we focus on providing, uh, services for fathers and their families.
Mm-hmm.
So we provide services for moms, aunts, uncles, grandparents, everything, but our focus is working with men and fathers.
Okay.
And so we have three primary, uh, programs that we offer. Our first program is called our, um, our Strengthening Fathers, uh, program or workshops.
Okay.
And so we do the, um, the Strengthening Fathers workshops, uh, in partnership with organizations like juvenile courts. That's where most guys had to deal with child support cases at.
Shout out to Judge Sheila Calloway.
That's it, that's it, my guy Lionel Matthews, juvenile court clerk, he, uh, he supports us by, uh, helping us put in the waters. That's it, and, uh, and so we work with those guys to help do parentage plans and things like that, but we have a curriculum that they can go through. And it focuses on helping men say, who am I as a, as a man first, right?
Mm-hmm.
Cuz a lot of the guys that come through the program grew up without their dad.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and so just helping them to understand, who am I as a man? What are my responsibilities to my family, my children first, right?
Right, right.
And then what's my overall responsibility to the community? And so that's what the curriculum does, it just helps these young men understand, you know, what their responsibility is to the community as a man and as a father, right? And, uh, so that's one of the workshops that we provide, it's our Strengthening Fathers. We have another one that's called Strengthening Families,
Mm-hmm.
which works with the entire family unit, including the children.
Okay.
And, uh, and the thought behind that is that, if you think about it, when your kids go to school and they, you know, go through some program in school, but you don't get the information as a parent, you can't really support what they learned at school because you didn't get the same information.
Yeah, you weren't in the room.
And vice versa, if I do a workshop for a parent, but then the kid doesn't get the information, then the kid is looking at you like, why are you trying to change up what we got going on in here? You know, this ain't what we do.
That ain't what my teacher said.
You know what I'm saying, you know.
But this is what I said.
Exactly, and so you get that back and forth. We provide the program for both the parent and the children simultaneously, so we separate the parents and the kids and then we bring them back together to kinda practice the skills that they learned during the workshops. So I'll give you an example, and this is when my family went through it, so, I don't know if I mentioned, but my wife and I, we have seven children.
Mm-hmm.
And all together with each other, you know, and, uh, but we got seven kids. And we went through the workshop, uh, several years ago, and my middle daughter, Noriah, shout out to Noriah, um, she always holds us accountable. And one of the exercises is to have a conversation jar where all the parents receive a workbook and it has, um, a page that has conversation topics that you're supposed to cut out and create a little conversation jar out of like a mason jar or whatever
Mm-hmm.
and drop the, uh, topics in, and when you have family dinner, you pull the topic out. So even if you just order pizza or something, once a week, you just pull that topic out and now everybody around the table has to discuss that topic. Well, I went through the workshop and I'm, you know, I'm teaching the classes and all of this. And I was like, huh, we ain't gonna, we ain't got time for the conversation jar. I ain't gonna do that, man, we, we do everything else, we good on the conversation jar. And Noriah said, no daddy, we have to put together the conversation jar, I'm gonna make it tonight and we're gonna use the conversation jar. So she made the conversation jar, put the little papers in because she went through the workshop with us.
Uh-huh.
So she knew that we were supposed to do it.
Right.
Now, if she hadn't gone through the workshop and I had just got the information.
Yeah, y'all really would've bad, bad past that process.
The kids wouldn't have known about it, and so because the kids participate also,
Mm-hmm.
they can hold you accountable for doing the different activities that you learn during the program.
Right.
And a lot of times, that's just what you need sometimes as a parent, you need your kids to kinda hold you accountable as, in the same way that you hold them accountable for doing their homework and going to bed on time and all of those other things, so. Um, so that's what we do, and then I got one more program, the last program is called our Training Camp for Dads. And so it's a program where we teach guys, um, the ins and outs of newborn and infant care. We provide that workshop every third Saturday
Mm-hmm.
and we make sure that we're partnering with the hospitals so that when guys come in, um, for the OB appointments with mom, that they hear about the program and they can register for it. And right now I have funding where we can provide the guys with a scholarship to participate for free. And then if you complete the workshop and you qualify, there's some eligibility guidelines, but if you qualify, you receive a hundred dollar gift card when you complete it.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, we do it to Walmart and Target, I don't know if I can say the people, but we give gift cards to, to the guys so that they can go out and buy a car seat or whatever it is that they need.
Right.
We used to partner with Babies R Us when Babies R Us was open, and we actually did the workshops at the store. So we gave the mom the gift card while the guys were in the workshop
Mm-hmm.
and she would go shopping and the guys would get the information on how to take care of this new baby, changing diapers, burping the baby, um, just childproofing the house, all of those types of things. It's a three-hour workshop, we feed the guys, we have a good time as men, just talking about this new experience.
Very good, man, that's good, and, and I heard you, um, so a part of the program, you took some kids out to Memphis to the Grizzly game and stuff. Yeah, I was like, I'll stop it, get on the list.
Yeah, we always try and find fun ways to celebrate, uh, when we complete the workshops.
Okay.
And, uh, and so we did a, a workshop with the families and then as a part of it, the incentive was for them to go to the Memphis Grizzlies game. And, uh, and we took, uh, I think, I'm trying to think if it was with the football team or the basketball team, it's probably the basketball team
Uh-huh.
uh, over at, uh, Haynes.
Okay.
I think they, maybe they made the playoffs that year or something like that, and we took the team down.
That's dope, that's dope, man, so tell us about early voting, how can they get out and vote?
Yeah.
Uh, what times, what the locations, all of that?
So early voting, uh, starts on the fourteenth, so it's Valentine's Day.
On Valentine's Day.
Show me some love, come out and vote for me, uh, at your closest, uh.
Before you go out and take your boo out.
That's it. You gotta get your vote on and come vote for me. Um but there's several uh early voting locations and uh you can find them on the Election Commission website. Uh but I'll list off some that are in our district. Uh you have the Bordeaux Library. Um the Goodlessville Library is kind of near our district and so um you could vote there. And then also uh the next closest one would be uh the Madison Library as well as um the Howard School Building. And so those would kinda be the closest locations.
Library, Madison, and also um Howard School Building. More information, man, I'ma post all that information on streetsnine nine three dot com on the C W blog. So you can get all that information. You can do your part and help uh vote for my man Robert. He's coming through and doing some great things in the community, especially with the youth and the fathers and fatherhood, man. And uh you got my support, man, to vote for you, man. And everybody here at Streets nine nine three, it's open doors. Whenever you have uh wanna voice the conversation, this door is always open for you to come through and do your thing over here, man. Any last words? Where can they follow you on social media?
My kids tease me about my uh social media name. I'm Rob Tay, every day. The kids think it's funny. They get teased at school cuz their their peers come up and they find their old pictures on my page. But it's Rob Tay, every day. It's with a little DC accent on it. Um and then um also the uh the nonprofit page is called newlifeprogram.org. If you go to newlifeprogram.org, that's the page for the nonprofit. You can register for the different workshops on there and uh fill out the eligibility form and that'll let us know um what type of services we will we'll be able to provide free uh for the families.
I appreciate you, man. Robert Taylor, man, running for school board district number one. Tailorforschools.com is the website. Lock that in. Also as well, newlifeprogram.com. I'ma post all that information. Robert, I appreciate you, man, coming through, stopping through the C W show to let these folks know about you and everything that you got going on here. And you guys can follow him, uh Rob Tay, all day, every day.